All right. Good morning, good afternoon and good evening, folks. How are y'all doing? It is a wonderful early Monday morning. And we are here to learn about the ACP 420 Managing Jira Service Projects. I am still amazed and thrilled that so many folks want to learn about this stuff with me. Again, I did this to help me study. I was having trouble finding time and making space to go through the free training at Lassian has. And so I decided to do it online. So thank you all for helping me learn how to do this, and I hope you all learn something from it, too. I have made a lot of changes to this since last week because I realized so many folks wanted to join in and I'll probably keep adjusting and tweaking what these look like, how these run, in order to help out everyone out there. It's a bit more work for me, but the side effect is I get to do the content more and hopefully it's a better experience for everyone learning. So in the past week, I've done things like added a new website. Sandeep, I am. Thank you so much for asking. I appreciate that. I've set up a website that I'll show you all. I've put more time into preparing for this and having, you know, specific topics I want to cover in each session. And then a couple of other things that hopefully are a pleasant surprise for folks. And Frank, you already beat me to my first question, but just curious where everyone's at. Helps if I can type. Now I got Berlin. I'm in the Bay Area in California. So kind of like last week, I'll start out with a couple of slides and this will just talk about, you know, a couple of housekeeping things like what to expect from these sessions. But also go over the topics I'm hoping to get through in the next hour. I'm kind of guessing it all the stuff we can get through in a one hour session. So we'll see how it goes today, see how far we get. And I'll also be keeping a close eye on the questions through the chat. So please ask questions you have. I have a few other ways you can submit questions or let me know you need help. So please don't hesitate to ask. Oh, Sandeep, you are not interrupting at all. Thank you so much for telling me that first session is inaccessible. One thing I will do is show folks how to find all of the sessions. There are two places to find them, so I'll make sure you know how to get to them. My goal with this is it's not just good while we watch it. These are going to be recorded and live on my YouTube for folks. Armenia, welcome. Susanna, I hope I said that right. St. Augustine, Florida, love it. Cambridge, the University Arena? Sorry, that's my only reference to Cambridge. I understand it's also a town or a city. So we're going to go over a couple of slides real quick, just to talk about some things and then we'll jump into the, you know, the the true parts of this, which is actually studying. Right away, there's something I'm going to call out and that's the QR code in the bottom left. Yep, Frank, you nailed it. It's in a playlist. I will show you all that playlist. So I put together a website that I'll show you just after I go through these slides, kind of as one place for us to get information about this, to sign up for a newsletter or do some other things. That QR code is going to stick around. I'll just kind of leave it up. Most of the time I'll get rid of it if it's in the way of stuff or if folks tell me, hey, that's super annoying. But I want folks to be able to access this information. So if they drop in for just a few minutes, they can quickly get to a guide post to other information like Sandeep's question about all the recordings. Again, my goal is to make this information as accessible as possible because I know for me personally, mostly it's on a what on a bit of scratch paper by my desk. So I want to make sure you can all access it. So a quick note on who I am, for those of you who haven't been in one of these, my name is Rob. I don't have a lot of spare time. I have a family. I have a job. I do stuff like this. And as I mentioned earlier, it's hard for me to make time to study. When I was younger, I had more time and I would get books. I have a project management professional certification. I got a great two inch thick textbook that I could study and make note cards. I just don't have that time anymore. So that's why I'm doing these. I've been using Confluence and Jira and Atlassian products for about 10 years. And I mainly work in information technology. So I support help desk teams, which is why I chose this particular certification because it supports service management or what support teams would use. Oh, excuse me. Many of you have already found the chat. Please use that. I'll ask some questions in there just to get to know everyone. Where are you from, for example? But the nice thing about YouTube is I can talk to a lot of folks. The less than nice thing about YouTube is it's hard for you to talk back. So please use the chat to share ideas, to ask questions, to answer questions. This is a study session. This is not Rob explaining how it all works and knowing every answer. This is Rob learning with all of you. So I guarantee you there will be topics or questions that I cannot answer. Also to clarify, I don't work for Atlassian. I'm just someone who uses their products. So you'll see me working at companies, helping out other teams doing this. But for some of these topics, I'll need help from the chat. So just like last time, please jump in if you have answers. Please like and subscribe. That really helps me. My plan is to keep doing study sessions for different certifications, mostly so I can also learn them, but also so all of you have that opportunity. So the more, you know, interaction I get on these, the easier it is for me to say, yes, I'll keep spending time early in the morning to host them. But again, use that chat. I'll be keeping an eye on it. So our topics for this week, we're going to be taking a look at these five items. I'm hoping we can talk through and examine each one of these. I'm hoping we have time to go into a Jira Cloud Premium instance to play with them as well. I don't know if we'll get through all of this, just because I don't know exactly the questions and things that'll pop up, but I'll see how far we can get. So these are our topics, things like our core features and all we'll be doing is following Atlassian's free training. So we'll be using that as a guide and then I'll be elaborating on and digging in and demonstrating some of these topics if we feel like we have to dig more into what an SLA is. Or how we can map business requirements or a team managed project. So please keep using that chat. Let me know, hey, Rob, I don't get workflows and we can examine them more deeply. After this session, I will also be sending out an update. I'll probably put it on a blog, which is that QR code in the bottom and then send it out through a newsletter that answers questions from the chat. That will also include more in-depth videos, more in-depth information than maybe I can get to in an hour. I left this slide in here, you know, why do we get certified? It helps validate skills. For me, it just tells me, yes, I actually know these things. I've spent 10 years using Jira. I've never been really formally trained. I've just kind of figured it out. So I'm really also curious and I want to learn new things. I want to know what I don't know. Because I want to use Jira better and I just like learning how things work. It's also possible, though, you might have a job requirement that says, hey, you need this certification or it'd be a very good idea for you to have it. So that's why we do this. And then resources, these will also be in the description of this video. The QR code on the right will go to Atlassian's official training on this course. And that's what we're going to use during this session. So please use that QR code on the right. There is also an expectation you will study between sessions. I don't think eight hours is enough time to learn all this stuff, especially if you aren't practicing. So I've made time between these sessions and I follow that Atlassian page because that will have everything you need for the exam. These recordings will also help. I will show you where they live in just a minute. But also practice, if you have access to Jira at work, find a safe space, a safe project to play in, but get hands on. There's also ways to get a free instance, which I can show you if you ask me in the questions. I'll have a follow up. Manuel, welcome from Germany. I don't know where Lake Constant is. I'll have to go look that up later. On the left, that QR code is to submit questions. So if you realize in the middle of the week, hey, I don't know how something works. That's one way to get in touch with me to let me know, hey, Rob, I've got a question for y'all. There's a couple of other ways I'll share you can do questions, though. Now for a reason why probably many of you are here, I have three free vouchers for the exam. I'll be giving one away, actually in this session. Please use this QR code to let me know you would like to win one. Again, I only have three, so I'm just going to randomly pick from the group of people who submit. You have to take the exam though by June 1st. I will be taking the exam by 10:25, which is April 1st. Or around there. But if you win this free voucher, you got to do it by June 1st, but you can take the exam for free. So please use that QR code. Again, the link will also be in the description. I'm going to give one away today and then I'll spread out the other two through the rest of the course. And I'll come back to that one next. This screen here is the link that Atlassian has for all their free training and this is what we'll be using quite a bit. Frank, the free voucher is for the digital one. I assume it's just for the exam. I will double check, though. When we take the exam, we can either take it at home or we can go to an in-person location. If you do it at home, it's a bit of a pain and maybe I'll add this as a topic in a future video. But you have to have a clean room with nothing visible and no one can interrupt you. That's what I like to do because it's hard for me to get to a Procter location. Your other option is to go to a Procter location where there's someone who will make sure you're not cheating kind of stuff. You have to go drive there or find one. The advantage is, though, you can get up and like use the restroom. You can't do that necessarily if you take it at home. But I will double check that, Frank. That is an excellent question. This page is Atlassian's free training and this will be our guide for this, these study sessions. I expect that if you want to take the exam, you will go through these between our sessions. Again, oh, look at this. Oh, excuse me. I hope people understand why I'm laughing so hard. They are launching a refreshed version of the certification exam. Okay. So this changes things up a bit. I guess I can't take the exam by April 1st. So good news is there'll be an updated version of the exam, it looks like. Of course, this would happen right when I'm doing these. Excuse me. So it looks like there's going to be a new version of the exam coming out. So I guess the good news is the new version will include new features and new things in the product. The bad news is it looks like we can't register for the exam until April 15th. Okay. Good to know. If you happen to win one of those free vouchers, I will make sure that, you know, you can actually use it. We might still have to take the exam by June 6th. I hope this doesn't throw too much of a wrench into our study plans. Let's take a look at these new topics, actually. So clicking this link, this is a great thing to keep in mind and this is what I use between study sessions. This file tells us what is on the exam that we would be taking. So this is what I build out when I said, hey, we've got some topics that we'll go through. I will send out a link to this afterwards and I'll make sure folks have access to it, but please take a look at this on your own. The important thing to look for is the percentage of the exam topics cover. So 16% of users enrolls, 9% capabilities. This helps you figure out where you should put more time studying. 21% for customer facing stuff. Is anything really big? 5%? Okay. This is new to me. What I will do is right after this session, read through these requirements and see if I can figure out what the differences are and then send out information to everyone on this with my thoughts. But that is a very interesting surprise for a very early Monday morning for me. All right, but regardless of what they do to the exam, start prepping for free is where we want to go. So I'm going to put this link in the chat or hopefully I can paste it in. Had some problems with that last week. There we go. That big, long link will bring you to the free training. Now it has three different modules. Today, we're going to open up this first module and we're going to start going down each of these. Again, I'll be talking over these, but this is your reference. Use this between sessions. The other thing I want to share is I have set up just a landing page and that's where this link goes in the bottom left. I'm just calling this group the Atlassian Study Community. If anyone has a better name, please let me know. But this has links to the certification information. This link should take you right to my YouTube, which is where you're at now watching this. And if you go under playlists, there's a playlist for ACP 420. So if you open up this playlist, this will have every future session, but also every recorded session. And right now you can see us live. So if you miss a session, this is where to go. I'm also playing around with the Discord server. If folks want to try that for chat between sessions, just click this link and you can sign up through that. That's one way to communicate. And then I've got a newsletter going. I will send out one email a week to this roughly and this will include the FAQ follow-up and information about what's going on with the study sessions and everything else. So this is, these are just other ways to get information from me. Again, totally optional. I'll also be putting that information on my blog. I just want to, I'm just looking for different ways for folks to stay informed. So if you have other ideas, let me know as well. And I am also available for one-on-one if you would like. You know, there's a small fee for that one, but if you want one-on-one training or you got questions, just scroll to the bottom and you can sign up my calendar and everything's in there. So definitely check this out for up-to-date information and I'll be tweaking and maintaining this just to make it useful to y'all. Oh, apparently I hit 1,000 subscribers. Yay. Thank you, everyone. But to our study topics, what were we going to do today? Our core features. All right. So this is just that first guided study path. And I'm just going to open up Explore Core Features. One of the things that confused me when I started using Jira was issue type versus request type. And these are important concepts. A request type, and this is, these are my words, is what the customer will see and the kind of requests they have. Like that's what it's called a request type, right? Request types for me, I've seen things like policy question or benefits help or password reset. And you can have multiple request types that all map to one issue type. If you use Jira before, you're probably very familiar with issue types. These exist in Jira's software. So if you're using Jira's software for Scrum or for project management, issue types are the tickets you create. Request types are like an additional piece of information about those. And request types are what show up in the portal. Now, request types don't exist in Jira's software, which is why they're new here. But out of the box, let me see if I can zoom this in for us. There we go. No, come back. There's a number of different issue types that show up. We've got like an incident and change and all that. And each one of those can have multiple request types. So if I go into Jira real quick, go away. My faithful J Quill project. And I open up one of these tickets. And I look at this little tiny box way up here. The issue type for this is general request. And in this project, I have three other ones. I have a task, a subtask and a simple issue type. The request type, however, might be different. If I open up the portal, this has an account help request type. And if I were go to put in a ticket, I wouldn't see that general help because issue types don't show up on the portal. I would see the request types. Customers don't really know the difference. They just know, hey, I put in a ticket and I need your help. But as agents and as people using it, we need to understand this difference. We can typically modify and change very easily what a request type looks like or does. So like if I open up this project and I click on project settings, and under request management, I can see all the request types in here. I'll zoom in a bit. Whoop, too close. So I can see the request types on this side and in the middle, the issue type they connect to. Now, as a project admin, and this is the role that I usually have, I can go in and change these. Susanna, that's a great question. Why does it say team manage projects only use request types? I'm going to pop open a team managed project and we're going to take a look. Because I've kind of scratched my head a little bit about that one, too. But I can come in here as a project admin and just click on the request type and edit it. So it gives us, we can configure it more easily if we're a project admin. I, or a, yeah, project admin. I get Confluence and Jira terms mixed up sometimes. I can add or remove fields from the request type. But I cannot add new fields to the request type in what's called a company managed project. So we'll dig a lot more into company managed projects and team managed projects. But typically the admins can't create new fields. They can't change what's called a workflow, which we'll talk about in a minute. Because that's on the issue type. Or on the issue. And so there's our big difference. As the admin, I can typically configure the request type and customers see that. But as an admin, I typically can't modify the underlying issue type. That's something that you need more permissions for. And Suzanne's a great question. Why does it say team manage projects only use request types? Nope, come back. I would like to return to my activity. Thank you. So now we'll take a look at request types. And again, this is the action or the thing usually the customer needs help with. I need to request new content. I have broken hardware. I need a Wi-Fi account and what they'll interact with. I think for the exam, a big thing to keep in mind is issue types can have multiple request types connected to them. But a request type is only ever connected to a single issue type. So if I look at my portal real quick, account type will have one and only one issue type connected to it. But the general request issue type can have one or many different request types and we can see that here with account help and emailed help. Oh, I have two of these open. Whoops. Some more examples in here. So when I think of building these out, I consider a few things. Do I have to have? Will customers interact with it directly? Is it a group of things? So we can see here, broken hardware could be a broken mouse, a broken computer, a broken server. Or a system outage. It could be any system. Whereas a service request, a little bit more specific, I need a new Mac. My monitor broke. I can't log in. All right, workflows are the next thing to consider. Workflows exist on the issue. And workflows are just the series of things or stages or steps it has to go through in order to be completed. And this challenged me when I didn't know about them. Going back to Jira, if we look at any given ticket, typically how agents would interact with this is they would make some change to it and they would say it was done or they would go into do or it would change some status. This is moving the ticket through the workflow. And we can actually view the workflow and I encourage folks to always do this when they go to a new project. But this is the very, very small workflow for this project. A ticket is created and it becomes to do, that's its status. Then it's in progress and then it's done. And I can see these little arrows telling me how can it move between statuses? So there's no way right now for a ticket to go back to to do because there's no arrow pointing to it. There'll be a start button and you can see the word start. It goes in progress. And then it can become resolved and then it can get reopened. So this is a workflow for this ticket. Now it's not connected to the request type. It's connected to the issue type. So this is the project it's in. And here's the issue type that this workflow is tied to. Now you've heard the term company managed and team managed. If this is a company managed project, I won't be able to edit this workflow unless I have like org admin or extra permissions. If it's a team managed project, I can. So that's one way to instantly know if you can edit workflows, you might be in a team managed project unless you know for a fact you have those extra permissions. Another way to tell is they, they tell you off to get rid of my fun little overlay that's always in the way. Down at the bottom left, you are in a company managed project. Generally, that means that we won't be able to modify it too much. We'll have some restrictions on what we can do. Let me go find a company managed project. So just looking on view all projects, I can see under type which ones they are. I forget if I made my own or not. I'll try not to use someone else's. Well, we're going to borrow a service desk. So the difference in a team managed project. And I'll get rid of my fun little QR code again. It just says team managed. This is set when the project is created. So whenever someone made this, this is what they did. Are there any tickets at all in here? I will make a ticket. Very quickly, just put in a test ticket. As a project admin of a team managed project, I actually have the ability to change that workflow and add fields and do a lot of things I can't otherwise. So if I open up this workflow, we're going to notice it's a lot more complicated. There's a lot more things happening. And so I always try and read these before I try and change them. I find the start, which is always a gray dot. And then it's saying it can go to waiting for support. And then each of these arrows tells me where it can go to, which looks like everything. It can then become waiting for customer, moved escalated. And you'll see Jira is actually highlighting the transitions or these lines as I've kind of mouse over them to help me see what's happening. But I have an edit workflow button and everything is in the way today, isn't it? There we go. I'll just get rid of my head. Now I can go in and make changes to this workflow. I can modify it and tweak it. I couldn't do this in that company managed project. We just don't get the permissions. Now Suzanne had a question, why does it say team manage projects only use request types? That is a brilliant question. And that's confusing to me because every ticket has an issue type. And then it might also have a request type. So I don't know how you could have one without the other. If I go back to a ticket here, though, I am in a company managed project. Let me go back to my team managed project. Going to close you out. And open up this ticket. So this might be an error on the page, Susanna. What I'm looking at is this little icon up here. It says change issue type. So this ticket very clearly has an issue type and I'm very clearly in a team managed project. So it's possible we found a mistake in Atlassian's information. And that's something we should let them know about. That said, if they're going to change, they might be updating all of that content right now. So they might already know, but definitely confusing to folks. It looks like they are issue types in this team managed project. Back to our workflows and let's see what our friends at Atlassian think we need to know. It has statuses, steps that describe the state and transitions. And so we're just seeing that visually here. The blue boxes and the green boxes are statuses and the lines are our transitions between them. I'm sure we'll get more into workflows as we go with this training. Notifications, I bet you've all been drowned in Jira notifications. I'd be curious to see in the chat who is annoyed by Jira notifications. Just as a fun question, I honestly tend to ignore them almost entirely because I go into Jira so much. That's probably not a good thing. But notifications are just, you know, emails or something happens when something occurs in Jira. And they look like these emails. I believe we'll get more into notifications and configuring them in a later module. This is not everything we'll touch about. Qs are an important thing in Jira. I didn't know that these were an actual feature when I first started using Jira. But if we go to our project, there's just a menu called Qs. I was just told this is where you know to do your work. So a queue is just a list of tickets essentially. These are configured by a project admin. And if we look on the left, we'll see there's one just called all open. I assume that means that this is all the open tickets. I've got one called high priority. And if you look very closely, you'll see it starred. This is something that I can optionally do as my, an individual to organize them. So if I think these two are important, I can click the star and that'll pop them up. But my admin could also organize them and have different priority groups. So here's the team priority with the expectation that all these should be solved before we go to another queue. But just think of it like a saved search of tickets to help focus agents when they need to work. They can just go down the top to bottom and they know that that's what they should be working on. It removes some of the guesswork that folks have when they don't know what to work on. SLAs are another feature. These are the ticking clock on a ticket that tell us which one we really need to work on. On the right side here, I can see them. This SLA is just called time to resolution. There's a few that come default. I believe it's time to resolution and time to first response. But you can make up SLAs for different things. And again, I bet we're going to get more in-depth with this as we go, like how to configure them. But if I open this ticket, yeah, here they are. They show up right here in the top right. These are what help the agent know what they should focus on because when this runs out, we're in violation of that SLA. We didn't work fast enough. SLAs are typically, in my experience, first like negotiated with the organization they support. So when our IT team might talk to HR and say, we'll take four hours to reset a password, we can then track it in Jira with the SLA. And there's different ways to report on this and different things you can do. For example, trigger notifications, trigger some action if that SLA is breached, if you go over it, or if there's a certain time left on it. But the SLA is a way to help keep everyone honest and on the same agreement. I'm still zoomed in way too much, aren't I? I'm sorry about that. All right, there's a quiz down at the bottom. I've debated if I want to do these live and like talk through them or just skip. I might skip them for now and just keep going because we've got a lot of content, but I always encourage folks to take these because these will help you understand what's going on. And I just gave away and answered their notifications. I've done that one. Go back to my learning path. Justin, I missed them all the time. Oh, we've done core features. Ah, use cases. Ah, use cases. This is important for us to understand. It's very, because it's very easy with a system to just get caught up in the, the functions and features. But really, we need to know what the tool is used for. And here are just some ways that Atlassian thinks that Jira service management is used. I'm just curious which one of these folks have actually used it for. In my experience, it's almost always knowledge management and service request management. At least as defined in here, but I also acknowledge there's other ways like asset and config. I just happen to not have worked with a team that does that. But in my experience, the most common one is a service request management. And this is, you know, you have a new hire who needs help getting into a system or their computer broke. Or if something else occurs. Each of these has a different life cycle. So we think of different ways of handling these requests. For example, in service request management, we might have the customer request the thing. We triage it or assess it and then we do something about it. And so those, those are easy for steps that can happen. And then we ask for feedback to service this request for a password or for a login. They have other more in-depth examples. I don't believe this is a very big part of the exam, but definitely read through these and understand some of the basic differences. We'll keep going. But don't get too caught up in understanding enterprise service management in all of its technicalities. This is just to make sure we all understand, hey, how can Jira service management be used? So if we're ever asked, hey, I've got this problem with my team. Can JSM help? We know an answer. Customer service management is another one. Answering questions, prioritizing requests. Another major topic, incident management. For me, the big thing to understand with incident management is the difference between an incident and a problem. This confused me because they seem like the same thing. An incident is the event. Rob's mic didn't work for the live stream. That's an incident. There is no volume today. The thing that caused it is the problem. Oh, the mic wasn't plugged in. So the incident is usually what people will be reporting. Your end users will be saying, hey, I can't do the thing. That's the incident. The problem is what caused the incident. You know, the bug in the code, the missing configuration, et cetera, that caused it. So in Jira, this could be expressed with an incident ticket, people reporting things. And then a problem ticket that's connected to all the incidents. So you can see, hey, when we solve the problem, all the incidents go away. These have a slightly different process. You know, we have to start by diagnosing. Maybe escalating, we need more help. We'll have to communicate out what's happening. Hey, we don't have an update, but we think we know what's going on. Followed by investigation and resolution. So these are, when I look at stuff like this list of six, this to me is a, a starting point. If I didn't have incident management in Jira already, I might start with these six as statuses in my project and then change them as I need to. So digging into each step, the initial diagnosis. Usually you'll have a developer ops team or someone who manages it. Excuse me. But whoever triages the ticket, whoever takes a look at it first and tries to figure out what's going on, they may give it to someone else. A more specialized team or a group that has more access. This is a very common thing that happens. A ticket comes in, I look at it, I go. Either I don't know what that is, or I can't help you. I'm sorry. And I give it to, let me pick on someone real quick, Frank, because I know Frank knows how to fix it. So that's escalation, moving it between groups. Communicating out. And a quick, kind of soft skill, there's something called a no update update. You'll see me do this. I'll just say, hey, I don't have an update for you, but I'll have one tomorrow. That just lets the customer know they're there. That's part of communicating. I might not know what's wrong, but I still want my customer to know I'm there for them. I'm helping them out. Hopefully, communication also includes, we expect to have a resolution in 35 minutes. We found the root cause. Here's what we're doing. An investigation diagnosis step. Hey, we have to go dig in and understand what's happening. Resolving it and recovering it. So that's, in this sense, recovery is returning the service, making sure it works again, getting the server back online, turning the system back on. And then closing it out. Again, I don't expect us to have to memorize these for the exam, but it's important to understand how the tool can be used. Problem management is an extension of issue management. Incident management, I'm sorry, there's too many I words floating around. And again, the problem is the root cause, the thing that made the incident happen. That difference might show up in the exam, just understanding problem versus incident. And that's something I wrote down on my trusty notepad, just to help me remember. As I study, I write things down by hand. I have found that helps it get into my brain more, so I don't forget it. Some steps for problem management. Hooray. Again, detect it, categorize, investigate. I won't dig through all of these right now unless folks really want me to read them out loud. Alistair, I like that. Incidents is the, an interruption of a service and a problem. Ooh, we want to be proactive. Yes. So what Alistair, I think what Alistair is suggesting in the chat is with problems, we can be proactive. We're actively looking for something that could break and we're trying to fix it before it breaks. Or we can be reactive. Hey, we have 500 tickets saying our email server went offline. We have to react to that. But that will help avoid or solve the incidents. Change management is another group of things we can do. Change management is an important aspect of systems and projects. We have to make a change. We want people to know what's going on. In this context, it's about anything that could impact a service, something we provide to customers. I think these three definitions will be useful to understand. Standard changes are pre-approved and low risk. So we've gone to all the experts and they said, yes, you can take this server offline tomorrow. We have a backup and bring it online in a, in a day and here's exactly how to do it. Is it possible something could go wrong? Yes. Is it likely? No. Next is a normal change. This is non-emergency. But it's not necessarily pre-approved. Something happens and we're like, okay, we can make this change and get everything back up and running. But we need a little bit of review and approval before we can do it. So it's a little bit more risky than a standard change because it hasn't been vetted. It's not a fully understood thing. But it's not quite an emergency change. When we think of change management and incidents, we typically think of these. Think of any major IT calamity that has happened. Delta Airlines can't fly its airplanes because its internal system crashed. That's probably gonna need a bunch of emergency changes. These are unexpected errors and we have to just work on it until it's resolved. Hopefully, we don't have a lot of these. But in my mind, these three things, a standard change, pre-approved and low risk, a normal change. Non-emergency, needs a bit of review and emergency changes might show up. They're important concepts for us to understand. Our change management process, there's a request. We need to review it. Hopefully we have a plan. Sakib, I hope I'm saying that right. No worries at all, my friend. Welcome. I'm glad you're with us. You can see the whole thing recorded. Justin describes it to users. Requests are things you want or need. Incidents are things we can fix and a problem is the cause. Ooh, I like that. This is why I like, this is one of the reasons I did these study sessions. So I get to learn from all of you as well. So Justin, I'm definitely gonna steal that if that's okay. If you could give me a thumbs up to share that with other people, that'd be real helpful. But requests are things you want or need. I would like a new laptop. An incidence, hey, the office wifi went offline and then a problem is why it went offline. How many more of these do we have? Okay, two more. I want to get to the drawing for the free voucher right after this. Knowledge management. This one I have not used Jira for really. This is more about collecting questions, managing our knowledge typically in like confluence. But helping collect, what do we need to document and share? I typically do this all in my head, which is probably a bad idea. So maybe I should start using Jira for this. I do work with help center teams for like a public facing help center that use Jira service management to manage this entire process. So this would be, hey, we've deployed a new product. We need to make a new help center article. Or hey, we've updated the product and how it works. Can you go change it? And this helps us manage that by giving us that workflow and series of steps to manage our information. And a fun circle that just keeps pointing to itself, the endless work of knowledge managers. I hope, yep, last thing. A lot of stuff in here. Last up is asset and configuration management. This is not something I have personally used it for. Justin, I appreciate that. You're gonna see that example pop up in other places. So I thank you. Assets refer to the physical and digital things that our organization uses, our website. These live streams, your laptop. And then configuration refers to monitoring, sorry, managing the settings and configuration of those things. For example, I have an asset, my website. I will configure it by adding a new blog post. Or by changing a link. At the high level, there are people who dedicate their careers to this kind of thing. So I'm grossly oversimplifying how this works. But there are these tables at the bottom and these to me suggest we should understand these concepts a bit, especially IT asset management. Ensuring assets are accounted and maintained and managed properly. This will probably show up. This is a major use case for Jira. Service configuration management. This refers to having reliable documentation on how everything is configured. Let me zoom in more for this one. Imagine your boss has to understand how many laptops do we have and what kind of software is deployed on them. That's what this refers to. How do we quickly pull a list of that or get that information? And then the configuration management database stores all that information. I think these will show up, a question about this maybe two on the exam, just because it's called out so explicitly. So probably worth our time to review this and maybe not memorize it, but just be able to describe it in our own words easily. Okey dokey. I need to take my talking head circle off real quick while I go find the list of people to see who wins a free voucher. Alright, and now the moment you've all been waiting for. I really should have gotten a drum roll set up for this. I will actually share the link. Where did it go? In case anyone else would like to drop their name in the hat. In the digital hat anyway. Please use this QR code in the top right if you would like a chance to win one of these free vouchers. Again, we have to take it by June 6th. Given the exam is changing, I will ask if that timeline can move. And if anything happens with that, I'll reach out to individuals. The only way I could think of to get you this information is to send an email. So I will ask if you happen to win or if you would like to be in the drawing to share an email you're okay with. I will not share that email for anything else unless you say it's okay. So please take a minute, scan that QR code. And I will pick someone at random. Ooh, I have 55 people who are interested. I love this. Alright, I don't know if you're in here, but an individual whose email starts with Khan is our first winner. I will reach out to them directly and just let them know. I do have two more of these. Justin, if you scanned this code last week, it's the same exact list. So I'll keep just using the list and we can keep adding folks. But an individual whose email starts with Khan, K H A N, is our first winner. I'll reach out to them direct and let them know. I do have two more that I'll get in a couple of weeks. I'll be giving out another one. And thank you to Atlassian for actually giving me those. I asked very nicely. I said, hey, I'm doing a study session. Can I have some vouchers? And they said, oh, we would love people to have one or two. I was like, that's amazing. Thank you so much. It's a, actually a great deal, Justin. I was, I was kind of floored that they were open to that. Let's see where we are in terms of my grand plan. Okay, we need to talk about best practices and business requirements. Again, there are these quizzes at the bottom. When you go through this yourself, please take them. They will be a very quick way for you to check. Do you understand what's on the page? I find these very helpful for my own practice because they help make sure I'm learning as I go. I don't want to end up in a situation where I forget or I get to the end and I realize, hey, I have to study all of this. This helps me remember it as I study. So I'll share out some study tips to exit lesson in the follow-up. Khan, Justin, I wasn't gonna go there, but yeah. That is a reference to an old Star Trek movie, if anyone is unfamiliar. Alright, and as a reminder, I will be sending out follow-ups in a bunch of places. They will show up. I'll be sending them out through this newsletter. The QR code in the bottom left will get you to this page. I'll be posting them probably as a chat follow-up or at least some of them on, in YouTube. And then pop over into Discord too, to get another, another slice of information. Okay, so some best practices. Let me zoom in here. I try to keep these in mind when I make a project and I'll be honest, I sometimes completely forget about them because I haven't studied them enough. And then I suffer because I forgot. These are just good to know. I can't guarantee these are all gonna be on the exam necessarily, but doing things like gathering requirements before you start building is a just very good basic thing we should all be doing with systems. So I look at these and I also consider, hey, this isn't just for Jira. Like planning out in advance is useful for everything. So that's always the start. Like think through what your team has to do before you start going in and pushing buttons. Because you'll avoid making a mistake and having to go change it. Some more advice that they have, and I think they've modified the system behavior here, but I'll keep my mouth shut until they have the new training. The project key can be a bit of a pain to change if it's possible to change it all. So the, the key, the prefix to a ticket. In this case, SD for service desk is my project key. Before I commit that, before I save that, when I build a Jira project, I always ask myself, is this the best key? It should be just a couple of letters. I've seen longer ones. But it should instantly tell someone, oh, this is a service desk ticket. Cause it'll show up on every single ticket. You can change it, but this can complicate things. If the project key is used anywhere else, if someone had typed it in into an automation manually, it'll break because Jira won't go update it for you. So we want to be careful with the project key. There is the, the kiss principle, keep it simple silly. There's other ways to say it. But typically you want the simplest deployment possible, the smallest number of statuses, the smallest number of transitions, et cetera. Just to make it easy for folks to use. You still need to meet those business requirements, but you don't want to overcomplicate things. It'll be hard for users to get in there. People will get frustrated. That's how I started using Jira in an overly complex environment and I hated it because it was so frustrating to do anything. And kind of similar reuse shared configurations. The term we're gonna see a lot is schemes. A scheme is just a configuration we can use in multiple spots. So for example, there is a notification scheme. We can set up rules for what notifications get sent for one project, but then also use it on three other projects. We can do the same thing with workflows and issues and fields. Schemes really confused me because I didn't know what they were. And that's why this training for me is important. It will give me those concepts. But we can reuse schemes. If we're on a company managed project, we'll probably be stuck using some scheme that some other admin has made. That's typically what happens to me. I can't change the schemes. So I have to understand what they are. So I know when I run into them, what I, what's gonna happen. Naming conventions are also very important. Again, just a general systems thing. But if I always start my IT projects or my products that relate to IT with the letters IT, or if I always start project management projects with a P R O J. Susanna, a rule of thumb to have a maximum five letter key. I haven't heard that, but that makes a lot of sense to me. I might steal that rule too. If you could give me a thumbs up to share that outside with other folks. What Suzanne is suggesting is that our project key shouldn't be too long. The longest one I work with today is seven characters. It's the word people and that relates to the human resources team. But usually I make very small ones. Three letters is my usual max. Some other best practices. Please always test things before you deploy them. I've lost track of the number of incidents that happened and the underlying problem was someone didn't test their deployment. And this goes for me too. I have deployed things that broke. Maybe not most famously, but I accidentally leaked everyone's new titles after a promotion cycle. Because we didn't properly test an integration. So please be better than me and test what you do. Typically, what I do in Jira is I have an entire project that's just called Rob's test project or something and I go tweak everything in there. I also ask others to take a look at things for me though. Other things to consider, when you change things like the default or the project lead, this can have a lot of impacts on other things. Um, other things to consider, when you change things like the default or the project lead, this can have a lot of impacts on other things. This isn't as big of a problem if you have a smaller Jira setup. But at, if you inherit one, if you move to a big company or if you work with other people, it's very easy to, to forget a change someone made somewhere else and then you can accidentally do something that's not the best. Um, so always investigate, always ask around, always test before you change. Uh, and then the last one is have different role-specific dashboards, different ways of sharing information. You will have people who work on tickets called agents. They should have one set of dashboards or queues. You have maybe their managers who need a different set of information. You have executives, et cetera. Um, so by splitting out information by audience, you'll help serve them more. Um, also become a Jira champion. I guess I am one of these. Um, people ask, why do you like Jira so much? And my honest response is because that's typically what I have to use. Um, so I learned Jira because that was the tool I had to support the team. Um, but that doesn't mean I also shouldn't be using it regularly. This is something I'm not the best at, but I use Jira at work to track my work and I encourage others to do that as well. But this is something we can all do. This will also help our own practice. We'll remember things. Uh, open it every day. Uh, I'm guilty of not doing that. I need to be better at it. Um, but this ties back to when we think of studying for this exam, like getting hands-on. The more hands-on we are, the better. You can't have too much practice. Like I've never seen someone go into an exam and say, wow, I knew too much. That's not gonna happen. So if we're using this every day, all these terms and things get into us. Uh, communicate in Jira. This is one I do quite a bit. I'll scroll down a bit to this screenshot. Um, but if I have someone send me a Slack about a Jira ticket, I basically just respond with, could you please put this on the ticket? That way it's all in one spot and easier to handle. Uh, Frank. I like that trick. Uh, in terms of the length of a project key, imagine you had to pronounce it, so you want it nice and short. Um, Susanna, yeah, you did something similar to what I did once. Uh, fun story, editing a scheme and accidentally updating five or six unrelated projects. Um, so what Suzanne is referencing is a, a scheme is shared among different projects. If you edit the scheme, all those projects will also be changed. So if you don't know that that's gonna happen, you can really confuse a lot of people. Oh, and Frank has added the word shared to their scheme names. I like that trick as well. Uh, I might steal that one too, my friend. Okay, um, I have time, I think, for one more. I don't know why that closed out. Um, business requirements to Jira configurations. We probably won't get through all of this, but we are very close to getting through all the things I was hoping to get through in under an hour. Um, again, I did go through these in the past week, so I've got my notes. That's why you didn't see me writing down a lot right now. Um, but this is a lot of content, so I expect you all will make time between these to go investigate them. Uh, this is our next lesson. Maybe we'll get through this. We might get about halfway. Um, involve your team. So this is about, uh, mapping business requirements. Uh, this is an easy one to forget about. Um, I've used Jira a lot. I'm comfortable with it, so I tend to forget to invite other people to let me know what they need. Not the best idea. I want to go talk to my team and say, hey, what do you need it to do? How can it support you? What can it make for you? Um, I do this a lot. I just share ideas. I show them things. I say, hey, here's how it could work or here's what I think might be helpful. And then they'll say yes or no, but they'll be involved and they'll help you make a better Jira service management project because of it. Um, okay, three basic steps. I like these. Discover the business requirements. Talk to your team. Talk to the manager. Talk to customers, understand what they needed to do. Map those requirements into Jira, so think, hey, that customer said that they have to, they use Slack a lot and they're comfortable in there. How does that tie into Jira? What can I configure in Jira to make Slack work? And then actually go do it. So most people start at number three and then they realize, hey, we forgot a bunch of stuff. So take that time to talk to the business, the customers, et cetera, and understand. And then write down or think through how will this work and then actually do it. Um, discover business requirements. Yep. Um, just a good general systems practice. You know, sit down and talk with people, sh- ask them to show you how they do their work. Uh, and then write all that down. At the very least, you'll understand more about how your organization operates, but typically you'll get a lot of great ideas on how to make this thing called Jira better for everyone. Um, and you can also teach them. There's a link here to a free training, definitely worth sending them to. I've actually made multiple side decks over the years, so when someone new joins the team, I say, hey, can we grab thirty minutes? I want to get to know you, but also we have this thing called Jira that you're gonna be expected to use and you might not have used it before and I want you to be successful. And I go through that training with them. That helps build a relationship with this brand-new person, but also lets them know about how we happen to use Jira. Um, one thing to keep in mind with all of Atlassian's training, uh, this is my word, it is sterile. It is just agnostic. It has to work for everyone, but the way your organization works will be unique and different. And that's where you doing the training is very helpful, because you can explain why your project keys are twenty-seven characters long and how to pronounce them properly. That was a bit of a joke. Um, asking questions. This is hard. Um, so these are great guiding questions. Who needs access to it? What tools are there? What's security, et cetera? Um, but I like how they break these out, managers and leaders. And then end users, because these are different groups that will be using it. Um, so it's worth asking different questions to different people to uncover what's going on. Uh, and last, map them to Jira settings and configurations. I'm gonna kind of yada yada through this or blitz through it just because we don't have a lot of time. Uh, but some things to consider, fields, transitions and statuses should map the terms used, simple workflows. I spoke to a team who had a, I think it was a nineteen-step-long workflow and I almost lost my mind. Um, we made it a lot smaller. Uh, and then implement. Okay. That was a lot of stuff. I really should zoom out. Oh, is it stuck? It's stuck zoomed in. That's gonna make this a lot harder. Sorry. Um, okay, well, I guess I won't share that. All right, folks. Um, what's next? What I would recommend is take time to go through that free training that Atlassian has. Um, that will give you all of this information. Uh, but making time to do it on your own will help your, your brain get it settled. And that's why I write things down when I study, just to make certain, um, it makes sense to me. Because what makes sense to Rob might not make sense to all of you and that's okay. Um, I need to get rid of that. There we go. Um, so please study on your own. Check out the new website. I'm trying to make that a useful place where we can all go for these study sessions. Again, that has links to the YouTube playlist and I'll see if I can pull it up real quick. Here we go. Uh, right in the middle, click on this YouTube button that will take you to the playlist. Um, this one on the left will take you to, to the Atlassian A C P four twenty training. And I'm tinkering with the Discord server if folks find that helpful. Uh, click on this link to get an invite. My intention with that is it's one place to ask questions live to get help in between study sessions, uh, when we don't have the YouTube chat. Um, again, I have that newsletter. Please sign up. I'll probably only do one a week, probably on Wednesday or Thursday with a follow-up from the prior session. So that newsletter will include Q and A from this and other information, like a deeper dive into workflows or more content. And I'll also probably put that on a blog post on my site, just so everyone can get to it. Uh, and then if you want one-on-one help, you know, sign up for a session with me. Um, there is a fee for this one just because it's more of my time, but I'm happy to do one-on-one or groups if you have questions, you want to take a look at things live, et cetera. Um, all right, I do want to thank you all. Again, when I started this, I did not expect uh, anyone to show up, honestly. I was talking to my wife and said, hey, if I get like two people, I will be just completely thrilled and flabbergasted. Um, but there's like thirty-five people in here right now. I had a lot more last time, so I'm glad there's a group that's sticking around. Next session is next Monday at six AM Pacific. Um, please sign up. The same place you sign up for this one will work. It's also on YouTube. Oh, Justin, thank you for letting me know. I will go make sure that the, the Atlassian community site is updated. And I will remind folks, daylight savings time happens in the United States in early March, so the time may jump by an hour. Please be on the lookout for that. Uh, I'll do my best to keep reminding people. But I do want to thank everyone for sticking around. I really enjoy these, so I'm glad folks are here with me. Um, I'd still do them even if it was just me, because my goal is at least one person should learn something and if I learn something, that counts. So thank you all so much for joining me. I'm really looking forward to seeing you next week. Um, please like and subscribe and I will leave you all with a beautiful ending video uh, that I made up myself.